The wastewater treatment plant upgrade, but at that point we wouldn't need to upgrade it or expand it. Freedom Square didn't. There would be necessary upgrades to keep it working, but we wouldn't have to expand the wastewater treatment plant to 1.5 million gallons. So that's the general overview. The number breakdowns within that analysis. But like I said, there were a couple of things that we kept in mind when we did this. The authority would retain 1.5 million dollars of their cash balance. It's projected that at the end of 2023, they'll have 10 million dollars in the bank. That's what we used for the analysis. Obviously, that could change. The, we had a 5% yearly increase for expenses. Once again, tapping and user fees did not increase. Again, tapping fee increases is something that we've discussed at the sewer authority. Might be a good way of increasing that revenue for the future, regardless of how much Freedom Square comes in. And then we got an interest rate of 3.5%. That might be a little low because this analysis was done in August of last year. So obviously, interest rates have changed since then.
And then I hear you say that user fees will not be increased?
When we did this analysis, we did not increase user fees or tapping fees.
Everybody heard that?
Yeah, but when you're saying if Freedom Square doesn't go in, then...
Yeah, but once again, the upgrade would not be nearly as extensive. We wouldn't need to go up to one and a half million gallons because we want to project that flow if Freedom Square doesn't come in.
I'm Brian from Cazem, CEO with Bukart Horn. Just one thing with Terry on the analysis for basically no Freedom Square. As Jacob said, it shows a $9 million deficit at that point. But we would not be building the plant to that point. But what I wanted to point out there is that's kind of, if you look at that table right away and see a negative number there, $9 million, that's obviously that's scary, but we wouldn't build the plant to that. The authority clearly knows that we can't put the burden back on the current rate pair. So the whole objective is to make sure Freedom Square carries their part. And whether we go into some other type of agreement with them upfront to help pay for it, to ensure that they got the money there for us, that we don't start this project and get left holding the bag. So that's obviously the biggest concern the authority has and we have as the engineer on the project. And related to the interest rates, we use 3%, but if you got Penn Vest or anything like that, it'd be a much lower rate than that. So we haven't included any of the grant money or any of those opportunities that are out there.
And it's a phased expansion, right? I mean, you go into roughly one and then if everything keeps developing, then you'd go to the 1.5.
Yeah, and this analysis was the full 1.5 entity, so yeah.
So it was a worst-case scenario?
This is a worst-case scenario.
And we'd be looking for him to come in and buy his reservation of capacity for those phases as he moves forward.
So then this building, if I understood right, this building about halfway, if they complete about half of that of what's projected, that's like the break-even point, so to speak?
Yes, based on the analysis, again, without any grant monies or anything like that coming into play.
And if there's, if they don't come in at all and you do less, do you make a projection as to, if it's not 9 million, what would the projection be?
No, we didn't.
We didn't look at a projection because we wouldn't, we didn't look at what we would have to change for the wastewater plant upgrade. Like I said, upgrades are necessary, but we're not going to have to build as big of basins. We're not going to need as extensive of blowers for the aeration tanks.
Before Freedom Square ever came about, obviously, we were going through an upgrade process. And we still have to do that. We ought to meet that. So that's happened regardless, but we did not include those numbers at this point to show what that would be.
As you go through and look at it, I read it like there's a fairly significant cash balance now that is going to carry you...
And that's been growing yet. Those numbers are actually lower than what's actually there.
Yeah, our projections for the end of 2023 are already lower than what they currently have as cash balance.
So we're in pretty good shape with that.
And there's possible grants available?
Yes, yes. And we've already submitted for grants.
Yeah.
We won't hear about them until possibly September.
Okay, well, we'll see you next month and we'll review this and give you an answer.
Is there a way to lock Freedom Square in, you know?
Well, they currently have 167 EDU's reserved, so that's locking them in. Unless we went into an actual agreement with them, but that would probably require them to be on the hook financially for some part of the upgrade. Included in this is a $2.5 million pump station upgrade for the canal road pump station down there in the field. That pump station does not need to be upgraded if Freedom Square doesn't come in. So the authority could try to work with them on saying like, hey, the bulk of this upgrade is because of you. You're going to be somewhat responsible for that. Again, that's something that the authority can work out with Mr. Pash directly.
Yeah, there's so many of the items we got to work out. Once we know they have their approvals to continue to move forward.
Right. I'd like to see some kind of security before we put the, before we make our signature on it. Because, you know, we're liable for the bill if they don't pay it.
As the plans are submitted and they request additional EDU's, we can make sure the debt gets worked out before you approve the final plans.
Okay. All right, we'll see you next month. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll recognize the public. If you have any comments?
We're recording.
Okay.
Hello, my name is Todd and I'm at 2:30 building drawing. And I have some issues. I guess with what's been happening in township. Mike and I have tried to contact various members of the township staff over the last month or so. We've left recordings, but recordings are never, phone calls are never returned. Or when you call in, you get a voicemail and that's about all you get. So that is greatly disappointing as a township resident that I feel that I'm not getting the service from our employees that we should be getting. And I've heard the same comment from others as well. I've talked to a lot of my neighbors. My neighbors who live in homes that are older than five years of age say they get a newsletter from the township. I don't get one. I talk to my neighbors' homes less than five years of age. No one gets them. How many homes saying this township had been built in the last five years? And those folks may not be getting a copy of the newsletter. So that's another concern I have with the staff. Specifically, I called because we have issues in the Benavon community with parking. We have folks who literally park right on the intersection. Residents have called township people and are told it's an HOA issue. Residents have called the police department and have been told the same thing. The streets are a township street and therefore the parking one is a township issue, not an HOA issue. So somebody needs to start stepping up and taking responsibility because it's creating a safety issue. We've got cars parking in the way. We've had a recent incident where EMS could not get access to a homeowner's site due to cars parking in a legal parking situation. But yet nobody wants to seem to do anything about it. I've called numerous times, left messages about basketball courts on the street. I get no response. The basketball courts, I've called in two, three months now, and the basketball courts are still on the street. So we got kids out in the summertime that are out there playing. You got traffic flowing. And actually, I got called out by a parent because I was going to post the speed limit of 25, but that wasn't good enough for them because they had to interrupt their basketball game in order for me to pass through on the street. So there are some issues here and I would like, would appreciate being able to meet with someone from the township and resolving some of these issues or meeting with someone from the police department as well if they're going to be ultimately responsible for parking issues. The other suggestion I had just came to me last night. I was behind the, now I guess well-span EMS vehicle who was heading this direction. And I was not on their tail, but I could tell they took them about five minutes to get over here from their location in Manchester. Has the fire department considered giving space to an ambulance crew to operate out of Station 262? Which would, I mean, especially since if Freedom Way is coming this way, there's going to be a lot more population on this side of the township. And, you know, we do have a fire station. That's a good thing, but we don't have the EMS.
You certainly have enough issues there.
Yeah, I did say, well, I've been, like I said, I've talked to other residents and some of them who wouldn't come or don't come to these meetings and said, why don't you go?
Well, I'm glad you did. I'll go one by one before you hear the... The first thing of not getting any answers or response when you did call in, that needs to change. Anytime any resident calls in, they need to be called back or something, you know, to...
Even if it's to say, you know, call, you know, like in this, the police department needs to answer. That's fine, but, you know, I have emails from some of our homeowners who said, you ever seen a response like that? They referred the parking situation back to, or even speeding back to the HOA. We kind of do control over the township streets.
And the other thing is the newsletters. Do we have newsletters back on the back of the table? We try, we send it to Caskey Printing and we're not real happy with them. I was talking to another printing company and they get the updates of the addresses from York County. So it sounds like maybe they're dropping the ball on it. I don't want to pass the buck and tell them if somebody else has bought. But, yeah, we need to have it updated on a regular basis.
Those townships would get their list from the tax collector?
Yeah, we only do one newsletter and that's in the fall. But there are newsletters available at the township here and people didn't get them.
I know Mike had to make a special trip in here and went through a lengthy process just to get a copy of the newsletter.
And they are available online too. We do have them online. As far as the basketball courts, Jeremy, what do you have to say about basketball courts on the roads? Do you have that in other developments, I'm sure?
There's an ordinance, some townships have ordinances at this point that we've come across. You know, it's a case-by-case basis. There's no ordinance. It's a danger.
Yeah, I think maybe that's something that should be done because we do have the basketball courts here and you're in Benavon.
Yes.
And, you know, we're close to Benavon, our basketball court, so...
I know, Benavon HRA provides off-site parking and people don't use it. They park literally at the intersections and it's, you know, it's a safety issue.
Well, and that's a violation that in itself, correct, Jeremy?
I'm sorry.
Parking in an intersection.
Correct.
Just let's be here.
I mean, I shouldn't have to call the police for something like that, but how often do the police make a patrol through the development? Because I've been here over 18 months now and I've never seen a York area regional police vehicle make a patrol.
Well, it's actually Northern York County Regional Police. And they do, they do patrol. They don't stay at the stations. They are in their cars. That's their office. And they do, they check the schools, they check the township buildings. And I'm sure they're in your neighborhood sometime or other, but, and hopefully not just, you know, for...
Yeah, I would assume it's rather infrequently because one's complaining to the HOA how they got a ticket for parking till we report parking.
Okay, well, get them to check that more often and, and once you give a couple of tickets out, people understand you can't park in an intersection.
And I know that, you know, depending on the size of the police department, some police departments have meter persons who go out and do that for that. They're not tying up with a full-time officer because he has skills and other duties that he needs to pay more attention to. I understand that, but...
Probably, probably 85, 90% of police calls are service calls. So, you know, that's what they're there for, to help you out. Josh?
I think they weren't happy to meet with someone like you for Matt Barrett. They didn't make an appointment with me. If you call me tomorrow morning on extension three, I'll set something up with you and a couple of other people when we sit down and discuss more in length.
And as far as the speed limit, isn't it 25 in the developments? So the speed limit is 25?
Yeah, there are speed limits posted. As a matter of fact, there's even a sign, several signs in the development that said the speed limit will be strictly enforced. Well, you can't enforce it when, you know, you don't see the officers there doing peak timeframes to enforce it. So, you know, if it's going to strictly enforce, who's going to be the authority to strictly enforce it, I guess?
It's a matter of being at the right place at the right time. I mean, we see people come out, fish are driving, never stop. They just come out and do a rolling stop many, many times. But I appreciate you coming and going over some things and Josh will be happy to meet with you.
Okay, thank you.
As far as the ambulance, we did try an ambulance service here in the township and it just didn't work. Financially, they couldn't make it work. Now, with well-being taken over, maybe, maybe they can, you know, that's something we'll have to look at. You know, they just recently took over.
It just seemed like, that's a long, if somebody having a life-to-death situation, five minutes could mean the difference between their life and...
Now, if it's a heart attack or anything like that, fire company responds as well, so it's not just the ambulance.
And like I said, because of parking, we had, you know, recent health issue where EMS did respond, but they couldn't get access to the residents because of illegally parked cars, so...
And not to make excuses, but I know these words have issues with the phones for, it seems like a long time. You know, we're getting a new building up and I think we had a transition between IT guys there too, where the phones were a mess.
So we should be, we should be good now.
We should be good now, but they were a mess for a while because I know I couldn't get through either, so...
Well, when you're a resident, it's frustrating.
Yeah.
You can't get through and not everybody can come up between seven and five to meet. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for bringing all that to our attention. Do we have anybody else? Okay, adoption of the agenda is prepared.
I'll make a motion to approve the plan is prepared.
I'll second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Approval of the previous minutes, that's April 4th, 2023. There was a correction made, so we need to approve that and also the May 2nd.
I'll make a motion to approve April 4th and May 2nd minutes.
I'll second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Planning and zoning. Decker Final Subdivision.
Is there an A here?
Are you ready?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, Fritz, is there anything outstanding on your subdivision? It's a pretty simple subdivision. No building lots or anything?
Actually, it's not a division. Well, there's... The zoning comment, that was on Derek's letter here, where each lot shall have access to the public roadway. The plan shall identify the existing lot, access to lot number one, if there is an existing one. And this is a reference to Section 308 I in the zoning ordinance. And the applicant has stated that no access currently exists to lot number one. And the zoning officer myself has determined that this represents an existing non-fulfilling and may be permitted to continue. And the reason I say that is because our zoning ordinance, we updated the letter stating that lots that are, do not have road frontage are allowed to continue on as long as there are no buildings on the new lot or the existing lot or it's used for agricultural purposes or it is used for a nature wall, which that means all those requirements. If you're going to build a house on it, then that's going to be the next person that takes the rise of land. They'll have to adjust it for that. So, yes, then in the subdivision land development comments, the preference to note number eight, the applicant shall conform to the right-of-way, which has been officiated, you know, officially dedicated to Bed Dot. Was that shown on there?
So I was, I don't know if you revised that note or not. I was a little uncomfortable with the plans just stating that if the right-of-way had not been previously dedicated than it is by this plan. That's what note eight says on the, the right-of-way for Interstate 83 is what the note on the plan was referring to.
Oh, right of way, yes.
Yes, so, so the note, your note stated that if it had not officially been dedicated, then it is as part of this plan. It can't really work like that because Penn Dot's not accepting the dedication, so that's not a formal... I don't believe that note on a plan can act as a formal dedication. So what my comment was, was there any research that you did to confirm that it was dedicated? And if not, I mean, there should be, because if you request a right-of-way information from Penn Dot, they should be able to provide that along that section. So really, what I'd like to see there is almost a note struck. I mean, I'm pretty confident that Penn Dot has rights to that section. I just, I don't think you need to dedicate additional right-of-way per this subdivision plan because Penn Dot's not really accepting the right-of-way as a, as a function of the plan. I think the note should go away.
Who's the engineer? I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry.
So that was with that comment.
Okay, then Fritz, is there any outstanding?
Well, just the owner's signature on it.
The signature has to be prior to plan approval. I just got these here.
It's different time, though. It's just an...
Yes, it's not signed.
Administrative comment, so I think, I know you brought my alerts tonight. I think if you just strike out, strike out note eight and get everyone else to sign the plans, we should be, should be okay on our end.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? Okay, so with administrative changes, not changes, but administrative signatures and everything and striking note on the general notes, number eight, taking that out. So those are conditional.
So basically, you're just, I have a question. So you're basically just separating the lots for 83 then?
Correct. The lot, the lot is currently bisected by 83. They're taking the western portion of that lot and clearing out all the other lands on the western side of 83, just leaving the residual lot one on the east of 83.
So currently, this is all one lot?
The, in the upper right is one lot.
Here.
Correct.
Yeah.
So that's a lot and then see on the other side, 83?
Yeah.
Not on the lower right there where your finger is. That is part of that lot on the other side of the east.
Oh, currently.
So this is now basically establishing the property line as the center line of the east.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yep.
So this, this will be now part of lot two?
Correct.
Yes.
Any more questions? John?
So you're saying lot one is the one that is like landlocked where there's no access?
Correct.
Okay. But there is on lot two?
Well, there isn't, there is on lot two now and now you're joining part of lot one on lot two. So it actually makes it, well, you have less landlocked...
Right, right, right.
Land now.
Yep.
Yep.
Hey, do I hear a motion?
You're basically on a motion then to approve the subdivision?
Okay, conditioned upon the outstanding...
Okay, I'll make a motion minor to approve the subdivision upon meeting the conditions that are not met.
And I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you, sir. Freedom Square, where is Tim?
Where is Tim?
Yeah, he was going to be here tonight, so... I guess we don't do anything if he's not here to present anything. I think he was just going to give us an update on, on where he is.
He went and opened Frank's.
I think he was, no, he was just going to give a general update on where he's at.
Yeah, he was at the planning meeting the other night and was just getting an update to that. So I don't think, Larry, we had really anything to report.
Not much. He did say that the first phase is not going to be the retirement group per se, but a more younger age mixed group on the northern part, the part with more wetland in it.
And it's going, the first part is going to be on, it's going to be a road and I think it was 167 lots.
That's correct, yes.
That's the sewer, it matches with the EU sewer reservation.
What made you change, yeah? I don't know. That they decided to do away or not start the retirement area first.
Get more money to receive those homes. You got to generate money.
Yeah.
And you're generating money because of the kids in school.
Well, I think there's a nice public improvement.
Yeah, I think it's the easiest piece to build, it's the easiest piece to build first. He was always clear...
We didn't tend out approvals. I was retiring and taking out...
Yeah, I was under the impression he was always going to do a single-family housing section first.
Oh, I thought he was going, he was saying they were going to start.
He talked, he talked about doing a single-family and then starting the retirement.
I thought, like saying with Brian, that he was going to start the retirement first.
Yeah.
I thought he, I thought he let us do it.
So, yeah, I met with, you'll see in the report, I met with RGS and Tim a couple of weeks ago to talk through some of the stormwater methodology. They are targeting a June submission for this one, so it should be, should be official here soon.
Yeah, and at the planning meeting, he did say he has 100 and some people on the waiting list to get into those homes. And also, he has a lot of businesses that want to come in. He did mention Dumpin' Donut was coming in. And he had three hotel chains that were interested. And I told him, don't get any hotel chains. I have a number on them. Right, Jeremy?
That's correct.
They seem to be problematic, so I don't know if he'll listen to me on that one. Okay, well, we'll just table that and next, maybe next month he'll come and give us an update on it. I don't think he's going to start building anytime soon. I think, did they say all or even next year?
If he really pushed the envelope, it could be late, late fall. But he's, more realistically, it'll be sometime in the winter.
I'm picking up, I'm picking up from his engineer that it's going to be in the spring. The, he has a DEP permit that he's going to need to get that's going to take some time. And, you know, we discussed, a lot of this is due to the wetland impacts. So that's going to be a little bit of a review process on top of the NPDES permit that he needs. And Larry's right, I think as soon as he can get his approvals, might be November. And that's a really bad time to start construction, so I think you're going to see it in the spring.
Okay, the reports. We have the police report and the building report. The police report, we didn't have a meeting in May. That was on election day, so they did cancel that meeting. We did get a couple of things on the report. I'm going to give a couple.
No way.
Yeah, yeah, I still have something. You know, I couldn't even get this done. Okay, Northern Regional, Northern York County Regional Police are also now in partnership with Conawog Township on the Savvy Citizen subscription. And if anybody is not on that, it's a good app to get on your cell phone or wherever. or wherever, it's, uh, called savvycitizenapp.com. It's S-A-V-V-Y, citizenapp.com. And they give you all kind of updates, and, um, we went on the Savvy Citizen on May fourth, and within fourteen days, we had like twenty post on that. So, and then Northern Regional went live on, on the app on May the eighteenth, and you've had quite a few things put on there. Road closing, um, the weather, you know, all kinds of things, if there's an accident you need to be aware of, so, and also it has good things on there, like Food Truck Friday, which was really, it's been a success this year. We've had a, a great turnout, good food. So, um-
And other townships are on it as well, enjoying it.
So, uh, you can get on that app and it updates, it updates almost every day. Um, also, Northern York County Regional Police has, uh, we support our police garden signs and yard signs, and they support the Police Explorer program. So, um, the garden signs are fifteen dollars and they're double-sided, and the yard signs are ten dollars. So you can get them at Northern Regional anytime they're available. Uh, Jeremy, did you have anything to report to us about street rods last weekend?
I actually was waiting for a patient. Just coincidentally.
But we haven't heard any negativity about it, so it sounds like it might have went good. The, um, reason that they're really controlling it is because the businesses along the food businesses, um, they weren't being patronized because people would do tailgates, and then they would throw trash.
Yeah, but if you close a parking lot, they can't get through it anyway.
So it, it's a fine line there, but, um, and they encourage everybody to go to the fairgrounds, but it's expensive.
It is.
Yeah. Also, your spring firearms training, uh, I've seen that that was completed, and, um, do you have any idea how many shells do you use, how many?
Rounds?
Yeah, rounds.
Roughly about a per qualification, seven thousand, seven, eight thousand and a half.
I know, the chief, uh, mentioned that already in his report, and it was like, it was an outrageous amount, and at one time you couldn't even get the shells.
It's, it's still, yeah, some ammunition, yeah, since COVID and stuff, yeah, yeah, a year, two year out.
And our police calls from last month, they were up sixteen point two-two percent. So, uh, with the summertime coming, um, and it's obvious the police are, you know, in your neighborhood, so it's sixteen point two-two percent increase. Um, also, Josh? We're having CPR training?
Thursday at nine. Just put a Thursday line, yes.
Were you going to leave many of us, no?
I just got on this morning.
Oh, okay.
Thursday at nine.
Yeah, it's June the eighth at nine o'clock.
Two hours, so the, the office will be closed for the two hours.
Oh, it'll be here.
No, it's going to be up in the regional, yeah. And, uh, nine o'clock on June the eighth. And what is that, a two-year?
Yes.
Regional.
Correct.
And Northern Regional is really gracious to do that training for us, so good calls. So, that's all I have. Okay, do I hear a motion to accept the reports?
I'll make a motion to accept the reports, correct the billman and the local municipal report.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Treasury report. A couple things I had to go over with Shannon, but, uh, everything came out pretty good. Anybody have any questions?
No, I didn't.
Did you see how much interest we're getting on our bank accounts?
I know.
It was sixty-one thousand already for the year.
And what have we gotten that call?
Like twenty.
That's great.
Yeah. You just never know. Um, I mean, we did get some COVID money we put in there, and I was already interested in things, but, uh, I'm sure that, that's shocking, I can't believe. Whatever you're investing in, Shannon, keep it up.
I'll make a motion to approve Treasury report.
And I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, manager, road report.
I have two real quick ones. Susquehanna Trail, like Cross Farm, the restoration work is complete, uh, still plates are now gone, and our road work in-house is almost done, half the company road is done, the second half will be after the new gas line, close to the other one is done. Green Springs is complete, East Andy's is, and around Municipal Building.
Okay, great.
Yes. I, these, what are their, whatever they're called, I hear, these cutouts that have been out on this road for months now, what's?
That would be part of the milling of the road.
Okay.
We originally were going to do it ourselves, but it's only an inch and a half, and they're milling two inches off, so when, when the road's done, that would be-
I got you.
Yeah, they're-
Yeah. Not, not great for old truck tires.
Well, you were going to have it all done until the gas line came in and said they were going to put another lateral in.
I, I put a text into Kinsey today to come out and do the work. The patchwork they did up here was phenomenal, so I think we can do with a little patch on that, where they can get the rest of it done quicker.
Okay.
And I do wonder when they're going to be done on Canal?
Yeah, who's going to ask that?
Columbia Gas. Columbia Gas.
Wow.
I don't know where to go.
It's Columbia Gas, and it's a state road, so there you go.
I guess that's people playing.
Oh, that's terrible.
That's terrible, about three of them there now.
Yeah.
That, we didn't even hear about it.
Yeah.
You were calling me and everyone else, but I found out through, right, contractor.
Yeah, they're not very good on communication.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, guys. Uh, so listeners report.
I don't have much tonight. The, uh, the, the work has been started, uh, to clean up the property at five seventy Locust Drive. Um, we have a second date scheduled to complete that, uh, coming up, uh, on the fifteenth of this month, and then, uh, hopefully that issue will be taken care of.
It's, it's amazing, the difference. And, uh, they had, they mowed, and it really looks a lot better, but, uh, it still has a little ways to go, but, uh, it looks good.
I think for the first day out there, there was a lot of improvement, and then, uh, you know, the, the dumpsters were filled up, so they had to be empty, so we just decided that we could, uh, schedule the rest to come back. You know, give, give them a chance to mow, do some of that stuff, so.
Okay. And I think we need to keep ahead of that because I feel one in another year it could get back to the same situation.
Well, I think we have some work, and we never did anything with that whole roof property.
Yeah. And also mentioned to Fritz about the auction house out here.
Yeah.
That is a mess, and he, you have let us out.
Yeah.
Yes.
So that might be another dumpster.
Okay, well, we have, we have the, uh, you know, we have that, that dump hat now, I think, so, you know, we have contacts and people that we know that can do it and everything, so it's-
How long have we been waiting on the boarder?
Long time.
Five years, ten years.
I think it's been a long time.
In a mess.
I mean, now that we've kind of moved, I mean, what, what's stopping us from?
Nothing. There's going to be some legal action taken there.
Okay.
And that, and that is cars and everything. So that's a little bit more of a situation than we had with just trash bags.
Yeah.
All right, uh, keep us informed on what's going on with that one.
That's it for me.
That's it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Engineers report.
Okay, I still owe you a memo on the stormwater management ordinance. I have not forgotten about that, I just have not gotten to that yet. Um, that's been a little bit more intensive than I thought it was going to be, so I've been chipping away at it. I will have something for you, I promise, by next month, um, maybe in the next week so we can try to talk about it between now and next month. So that's definitely on my list. Another thing on the agenda tonight was Mill Creek Park expansion. We've had some discussion here before the meeting about revised layout. So it sounded like everybody was in general consensus that there's a direction you want to move in, so with that, I'd like to work with staff and kind of dial that sketch in a little bit more, and some of the feedback I've received.
Yeah, I, I like that, compared to the first one. I think that'd be more user-friendly. And we're talking about another entrance exit.
Was that the last, the last trial?
Yeah, if anybody has any-
Yes, for sure.
And I, I really don't believe there's anything else major in the meeting during the night to report the highlights, and if anybody has any questions.
I guess we'll do more parking up there, that gives our guys less mowing. How's that, Frank? Okay. We always need a full staff just for the mowing on the parks. Unfinished business? Do you think I have any questions for there, or Carrie?
I have one.
Okay.
On the boarder, up, right before you get to our problem area there, there's that real hard turn to the right. The property owner in there has taken down trees, has taken down the building that was there. Um, I've spoken to them, and they would be willing to grant us an easement to take some of that bank down, and really, I think, really improve that site distance around that corner.
That's a state roof.
Right, right. We, there would be a, a grading permit that I think, you know, and maybe, maybe we just kind of work with PennDOT, I don't know if they'd be willing to do something like that or not, but I know that I can very easily get the easements that we need to make that happen.
At our expense? At our expense, so, as a township expense, so it's a state roof?
To do, well, I'm just saying, we go to PennDOT then, you know, with the support of, of the township to, to get something done here.
Are you talking changing the roof actually?
No, no, no.
Oh, just, just taking down the junk?
Going down the bank.
Cut the bank back.
Cut the bank back, so I think cutting the bank back would really help with-
Okay.
The line of sight. Yeah. I, well, that's, that's a much bigger project. I'm, I'm talking about, you know, half a day's of the back coast time out there to, to pull that bank down, you, you know, open up that site distance a bit.
And you can work with Josh and see what can get done here.
So, could we get Josh authorized to, to contact PennDOT and, and, you know, request on behalf of the township that they look at and do the network?
Yeah.
Yeah, did we ask them to do it first, and then if they do it, then we-
Yes. Well, let's, let's see where we can go with PennDOT first.
Yeah.
But I think with the township's support, we could maybe, maybe get some movement from PennDOT.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll do that.
Right after they take over the Susquehanna?
Yeah. You haven't heard any more on, on that, have you?
What's that?
Turned back the trail.
I did.
No, I think-
But working with Representative George's office, he's in session the next two weeks, but they are starting to work on something, because it does have to go through legislation since it's one point six miles. Anything over a mile has to go through there, but he's willing to start working on something for us, hopefully prior to the agreement being done.
Let him take it, but let him do the mile, and then we'll go back by point six.
Anything over a mile has to go through legislation. If it's under a mile, they would, they can do it in-house, that's why he has to be involved.
Well, that's what I'm saying, let's just do the, slightly under a mile, and then go back next year and ask for the other point six. Got it? Okay.
Is there anything on, uh, cloverleaf?
I, I'd just say cloverleaf, we're still working with PennDOT. Um, my last, our last contact with them was that we were supposed to have something passed by the tenth. Action point per, it was supposed to be taken by the tenth, and, and hopefully this time it is, um, approval.
So this would be about the clover?
Um, I'm not sure. That's mine. And we're, we're-
We have ninth cycle requirements, is that what I see it? Can I get the email saying they're coming through revisions and then voices cycle this?
Right, yeah, it might be our ninth, it might have been our ninth minimum.
I haven't seen anything come through in probably last month.
Yeah. Fritz, how, how close are we on to the occupancy of that warehouse? The one that helped with the clover?
They paid everything. They're ready to go.
No, the one that's already up though.
One.
So then?
Yeah, I mean-
Do they have an occupancy permit?
Uh, yep. In it.
Yeah. I mean, they're getting closer, aren't they?
Yeah, they get, they're getting closer. I didn't get anything from Pete's office yet, that, easy to find.
So where, where does this go then from there? Like, say, say they apply for that tomorrow, is, was there any additions?
Once it comes back from Pete's office, compliance report that says they meet all requirements, we already got all our monies are ready, so that everything's paid, it's, it's, oh, you guys are done with it?
The last question, they didn't, they didn't have at least-
Right. We haven't released security yet.
They haven't asked for it.
Was there any restrictions on having that roof done before they occupy that? There wasn't? I think we did have something, you know, the, the lights, which are already done, the lights had to be done. Which had to be done.
Yeah, because they just gave us the money to upgrade the roof or fix the roof.
Yeah.
There was no requirement that they had to have that done before they opened up.
Yeah, well, we need to get that done before school is back up.
Yes. Before the wind.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else? All right, unfinished business? Don't think we have anything. New business? Um, we did have, um, some applications here for, uh, some resumes, uh, for the, uh, which was it, the planning board?
Zoning hearing board.
So, um-
Zoning, zoning hearing board.
Oh, the zoning, okay. So what we need to do is, I guess, have to add it to our agenda if we're going to vote on it. So I'll make the motion to add, um, the zoning, um, personnel onto our agenda. Do I hear a second?
And I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, uh, the one application that we got, it sounds like he's, uh, promising. It's Dustin Hall, he lives here on Copen Haven Road, and he's familiar with the township. He's been, I think, always likely, he's been living in township. He's going to finish out a term, it's a five-year term, and it'll start at the next zoning meeting, and it'll go till December of two thousand and twenty-seven. So do I hear a motion to accept his application?
I'll make a motion to agree with Dustin Hall.
And I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any other business? Does anybody have anything else? Shannon, do you guys have anything?
Nope.
Is the, uh, is the next meeting on, the next meeting day will be July fourth, so does that change?
July fifth.
July fifth, and then August will also be on a Wednesday.
What's in August?
Uh, National Night Out.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So we always have it, that's first Tuesday in August, so we always have our meeting on Wednesday. So the next two meetings will be on a Wednesday. Okay, uh, it's-
Would you want to review the, the status of the burn, burn rate?
Yes, yeah, and that's on Savvy Citizen also, if anybody goes on that. Um, York County, we put a burn ban on for a thirty-day period. Uh, if we get substantial rain, we can take it off, but right now it's, looks like it might be on for this whole thirty days. Um, also, uh, York County, uh, just put one on today, matter of fact, and that's going to run for thirty days, so it'll be, uh, July, July fifth. Day after July fourth is for the holidays, so no burning in York County, uh, any kind of burning, open burning. Now, of course, you can use your grill, anything like that, uh, for cooking, but as far as Now, of course, you can use your grill, anything like that, uh, for cooking, but as far as open burning, even burn pits.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. With your ban and with the county's ban, does that include, like, fireworks? It does?
Yeah.
Okay.
Like charcoal grills, only thing we use is gas grills. In fact, we had an incident today that people were burning today.
Saying York, York County putting it on over the Fourth of July weekend, that's-
Yeah, they, that's-
There's gonna be some upset folks.
Well, and they have the option of taking it off, if we do get a substantial rain. And, um, that, that's all gonna be on Savvy Citizen, so, uh, we really encourage everybody to get on there. Josh, how many people do we have on that? Do, did you say?
About, probably twenty-five, that's up to a hundred and seventy-five.
Okay.
Just over three weeks, so it's working.
Okay.
Yeah, if York County drops their burn ban, then we can as well.
Okay. Yeah, I was just sure if it was gonna cover the fireworks, too, just because-
And even, even if we would drop ours, and York County stays on there, they'd ride us.
Yeah, they'd ride us anyways. So ours just goes till, uh, June thirtieth, so, but-
Oh, no fireworks isn't gonna bother me, my livestock will love that.
Okay, anything else, are you do okay? All right, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, needing adjourn, thank you.